Monthly Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we open the meeting, we have a presentation to make to the Walnut Grove Athletic Departments. Outstanding year they've had the past year, and we have a proclamation for them. And since I'm old country boy and you can't understand what I say, we're going to let the county manager read the proclamation.
All right, I'll work through this. So proclamation honoring the Walnut Grove Athletic Department. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, and exceptional talent of the Walnut Grove Athletic Department has enabled these student athletes to excel in several sports. And whereas the Walnut Grove Football Team, under the leadership of Coach Robert Andrews, had the best season in school history and finished second in the region and made it to the second round of the state playoffs. And whereas the Walnut Grove Softball Team, under head coach Stephen Foster, was the region champions. And whereas Coach Amy Lanier led the Walnut Grove Volleyball Team to the regionals, where they earned the regional championship. And whereas the Walnut Grove Boys Basketball Team earned the title of regional champions, and Coach Will Witherspoon. And whereas Coach Paul Van Stone coached Layden Moss in his third state championship as a part of the Walnut Grove Wrestling Team. And Parker Warren and Zeb Dawkins were the state runner-ups. And whereas the entire coaching staff, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Walnut Grove High School were integral in the guiding each team through victory, through their unwavering support, and student athletes having represented themselves, their families, their school, and their community proudly. And whereas Walton County is very proud of the extraordinary group of players and the leadership of the coaching staff, now therefore be it resolved that the Walton County Board of Commissioners gives this special honor, recognition, and pause to celebrate these tremendous accomplishments and encourages all its citizens to commend and applaud the athletes and coaches of Walnut Grove High School and wish them every success in the future. So proclaimed this second day of May 2023.
Very well. Now, do we have representatives? Please come forward. All the Walnut Grove representatives that are here today, please come forward for the presentation of this and pictures that we can put in the paper. Now come around and present it.
Let me get out behind my chair and then stand right there. Come on, Brenda. Follow instructions.
I want to place the camera, and you take the proclamation and wish shaking. In other words, we're staging this. Let me get out behind and not block anyone. Great job, y'all. Now, I'm going to ask everyone to stand, and let's say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for all the special people in sports and coaches that represent our schools in Walton County. Please watch over us tonight and help us to make the best decisions for the county and its people. Please help everyone here, keep them safe on their way home. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and let the minutes show that all board members are present as far as the roll call. You've had the agenda sent out to you. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Planning Commission recommendation. Sharner, you're up.
Okay, this is the Planning Commission recommended denial of conditional use 23020018 for outside storage. Applicant Michael Greenley, owner is Tamar Jamshetty. The property is located at the corner of Lance Court and Highway 20, and this is in District 2. And the property is already zone B2, but they wanted to get a conditional use for outside storage. It would be for storage of vehicles. Their proposal is to put up an eight-foot fence around the property for screening and leave a vegetative screening between the property line and the fence. There was some opposition, and it mainly concerned where the trucks are unloaded from, like a car hauler, or the vehicles are unloaded. So the Planning Commission recommended denial. The Planning Commission also recommended that they have another site plan when they come to the board, and another site plan was submitted.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this application and ask if the applicant is here, would they please come forward and tell us what they want to do, please?
Ready?
Your name and...
My name's Parker Morgan. I'm an attorney. I'm here with Mr. Tamar Jamshetty, who's the owner, as well as Michael Greenley, who's our engineer, who submitted the initial application.
Okay.
And as was just stated, what we're here for tonight is relatively straightforward, and I'll keep it pretty simple and not take up any more time than is needed. As you can kind of see on the map that's up here, catty corner essentially to this lot is an existing business owned by Mr. Jamshetty, is Jet Auto Sales LLC. That's a motor vehicle sales. And the purpose of this application is to get a conditional use permit that would allow him and his company to store vehicles on this lot in conjunction with the business that's already operating across Lance Court. You know, in y'all's ordinance, conditional use is defined as a use that's listed in the ordinance that if it meets stated conditions and is then approved by the BOC. So we really kind of get into the technicalities of them. What are the required conditions that need to be met for the board to approve a conditional use? Again, we're already zone B2. Outside storage is the use that this kind of falls under for the vehicles. And there's really three areas under the ordinance that you have to look at. Excuse me. The standards reviewed generally for an application like this, you've got the existing uses and zoning of nearby property, the extent to which property values are diminished by the particular zoning restrictions, the extent to which the destruction of property values of the plaintiff promotes the health, safety, morals, general welfare of the public, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the individual property owner, the suitability of the subject property for the zone purposes, and the length of time the property's been vacant as zoned. Again, as was stated, really of those standards, nothing's really applicable that would tilt you to not approve this application. In fact, I would note this is the last remaining lot that's still vacant out here at Lance Court. Nothing has been developed on it to date. Then for conditional use permits, you get more specifically into looking at whether adequate provisions are made for setbacks, fences, et cetera, vehicular traffic and pedestrian movements on adjacent streets being hindered or endangered, off-street parking and loading and entrances and exits to and from the parking, and how that affects the use, public facilities and utilities being capable of adequately serving the proposed use, and whether or not it will adversely affect adjacent property values. Again, and I'll get into it in a second, the main concerns raised at the Planning Commission were primarily from neighboring owners objecting to some of the car haulers that were coming in and out of Lance Court to deliver vehicles to the lot, to the existing business that's there. And the owners have taken steps to really above and beyond what the ordinance requires to mitigate that. But otherwise, I would note too, there's already both the owner's property and then the other property directly across from us on Lance Court is another car sales lot. So we've got two existing businesses that have substantial vehicles on-site. And then it's off-site here, but there's another business that's an emergency relief business that has a number of tractor-trailers, large vehicles stored on-site. And then you have other businesses too that have not quite the same tractor-trailer size that have landscaping trucks, heavy equipment coming and going. So you wouldn't see this business adversely affecting the neighbors in any way. And then the last requirements are specific to outdoor storage, and those are that, those are much more technical as far as kind of the site layout designs, that there'll be appropriate setbacks, there'll be screened, that it won't be located in any setbacks for the storage. And again, as was stated, the application makes provisions for all of these requirements. So when you come down to it, we would say as an application, we believe that we have met all of the requirements under the ordinance for you to approve the conditional use. At the Planning Commission meeting, the motion that was made noted that essentially, what the minutes reflected, since you can't control the drivers and other businesses, owners can't get in and out, that a motion was made to deny. And I would state first, what's being proposed is not a scenario where no one can get in and out of their business. The worst-case scenario, which again, the owners have taken steps to rectify, if a car hauler was parked temporarily on Lance Court to unload, there would still be the ability to get around those trucks, again, which is for a very temporary period. But really, more importantly, after the Planning Commission meeting, the owners have done two different things. They've secured permission from adjacent owners, property owners, business owners off of Lance Court. Mr. Alan Bentley is at 5455 Highway 20, just off Lance Court, primarily where they have directed these car haulers when they come to go there for unloading. Then they send their employees off-site, get the cars, drive them back to their existing business. In addition, the revised site plan that was cited has made provisions that if a car hauler, even though they are instructed, as much as possible can be done, to not come on to Lance Court. The site plan's been revised such that they could come entirely on to this lot, unload, and then back out and exit without impacting any other driveways of any other owners. So they've done essentially, I think, everything they could do to mitigate any concerns of their neighbors and also comply with all the requirements of the ordinance. One interesting thing I would note too, outdoor storage as a conditional use for B2 zone, if the use they were going for was just motor vehicle sales, which is the existing two that are currently there, that's permitted by right. So it's not too dissimilar from what they're looking to do here, except that would then just require a building and actual sales activity there versus just the storage. But there's still, as you can see, substantial storage of vehicles with that use, which is permitted by right. So I think what we're talking about here, sometimes you think about outdoor storage, you think about heavy equipment or things being stacked up, is not what we're talking about here. We're just talking about cars being parked to assist in the existing operation of a business. So all that said, I would ask respectfully that you approve the conditional use permit. I think all of the findings are there for y'all to make that determination. And to the extent that it was denied, I just am going to reserve any kind of constitutional objections that my clients may have for equal protection or deprocess reasons to a denial. But I do believe that as per the terms of the ordinance, and then how they've gone above with adjoining owners to make arrangements to try and help satisfy concerns of adjoining neighbors in this business park, that we meet everything, and would ask that you please approve the conditional use permit. And I'm happy to take any questions, or again, the owner and the engineers here as well.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yes, now, all loading and unloading will be done on Mr. Bentley's property.
That's how they direct all their contractors to come. They've actually got it on the essential dispatch service. That's the address that's listed as Mr. Bentley's property. They can't guarantee with 100% certainty that someone is not going to see Jet Auto or see the lot and still come to the property. What they've been doing in this room since the Planning Commission meeting is either trying to direct those folks off-site. But again, to the extent that they don't, the revised site plan does provide for the ability to come entirely on to this lot that we're talking about here.
So the cars, how long do these cars stay on your property before they move to the other property?
I didn't hear the first...
How long do the cars stay on your property before they move to the other property? Do they move across the street to the other property, or how long do they sit there on this property?
Well, currently, this property is just vacant. There's no...
On your plan, how long will they sit there?
Tamar, do you want to come up? Oh, the property owner could probably answer that a little better.
They sit there waiting in line for service. So it could be a month, two weeks, three weeks. It just depends on, you know, the amount of volume that we sell, then we replace the vehicles back.
You said for service, so there's work to be done in the cars at this spot?
Not at all. They're waiting to move over to the existing business that we have to get them serviced, and then we can put them on the lot for sale. That storage, the new lot that we've been building right now is strictly for storage only. We're not going to be servicing. There's no customers walking in. There's nobody going in, other than employees only. So they're waiting in line for us to grab them from the storage lot, bring them into the existing business, Jet Auto Sales, get them serviced, and then sell them. So the timeframe is, it varies. It could be three weeks, could be a month, could be two months. It depends how soon we can get to it to get them serviced.
So if it qualifies for auto sales, why don't you just do the sale on that property versus store? I mean...
I mean, one, it's pretty costly to put a building on there. So we're taking one step at a time. At the moment, we just want a storage lot, that's one. The second main reason is we're trying to negotiate a deal with Alan Bentley down the street. He's selling 12 acres, and we're looking forward to invest our money and time into that and just completely get out of Lance Court. So temporarily, we need something just so we can satisfy our neighbors and making sure that we're not hindering their businesses. So those are the reasons why we're trying to get that place.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board at this time? If not, thank y'all.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this application? All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Tell us your name and where you live to begin with, please.
I'm Fred Binky. I live in Walton County. I live over off Miller Bottom, work at the bottom of Lance Court. There's already a daily continual pro... Today, on my drive to my lunch break, there was a truck parked on the Highway 20 side of that blue line. There's a little turning lane, and those contractor, it's like an uncontrollable variable. If they're having random car haulers come, you can put info on paperwork all you want, but they'll look up where the business, I'll just go right to it. And so when this Lance Court comes off of 20, it's like a real, it's a real hump in the road, and then the road crests right in between the next two businesses. So they're on a hilltop right here, and they regularly leave cars parked there daily. It's erratic, and it's a constant issue, and this will just increase an already-present issue. And then for it to all be flipping, if they're going to move, you know, I don't know, it's, you can't control the uncontrollable variable of the car haulers coming through. And they're living off Miller Bottom, and I'm driving this stretch of 20 every day. You're passing Copart and all that. This is a real, it's a real issue over on this side of 20 of a lot of these car haulers. They do a lot of damage. And this storage lot is right at the entrance, you know? And if they're going to have trucks back into that, that means that you're going to have people coming in and out of the businesses wanting to turn in, and there's a big truck blocking. Sure, temporary, it's a momentary delay, but when it's that routine delay, and you continually see them leave cars parked in the road on the hump and the crest of the hill, so it's a blind hill when you're coming up out of Lance Court, you're on a one-lane road, and it's a blind curve, you don't know who's on the other side. A storage lot means more cars and more problems. So, thanks, y'all.
All right, thank you. If anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Okay, I give the applicant a chance to rebut the opposition.
I'll just say real quick that I think what he described is something that would be applicable to any number of businesses where you're limited with your third-party vendors of any kind of delivery, to the extent you can control it. And so here, we've at least tried to make both accommodations primarily off-site for the vast majority of deliveries of people that will follow it. And the idea with the new one is to the extent that that is not followed, there now being sufficient, that ability to pull in completely off-site. So everything that would be within any applicant's control, we're trying to control here.
Okay. Now, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Was the site planned, will the lot be paved, will there be a driveway sufficient for car haulers to pull into this lot and unload on this lot? Has that been shown, or is... I'll ask my code office...
Mike, would you come up?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So it does show an area where they can pull in. They will have to have a commercial driveway, but the parking area would be gravel.
The parking area be gravel?
Yes, sir. So all they would have to pave is just that driveway going in?
Just the driveway going in. Okay.
I mean, the ideal situation is to be, if they could unload everything off property, you know, and then move them there, that would be the ideal situation.
That'd be the ideal situation. I didn't like hearing that car haulers are parking on the D cell lane on 20. I've pulled out of driveways when they've done that, and it does blind your sight. Okay, that answers my question. Does the board have any other questions?
The driveway would be off of Lance Court, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I will close the public hearing on this and ask the commissioners what they would like to do.
My big problem with this whole operation is the tractor-trailers. I've been up, I've tried to come out of Lance Court with a tractor-trailer setting, and it's a roll of the dice to even get out in the road. I don't think it would be right for me to approve something that would put more people in danger. I will approve it with the condition that all loading and unloading is done on the property or else on Mr. Bentley's property. We've got to get the car haulers off of the D cell lane and off of Lance Court. We've had people in Lance Court trapped before, where some of the car haulers would hang. Very unfair to them, too. So my motion will be to approve with the condition that all loading and unloading is done either on this property or Mr. Bentley's property. And you have an option to accept or deny that. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this with conditions that all unloading be done on this lot or the other applicant's property.
Loading and unloading.
Loading and unloading. All right, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. We'll go to item number 42.
This is approval of...
Thank you.
Of Z23020024, rezone two acres. No, it is two acres. They want to rezone one acre to R1 and one acre to B2. The property, the applicant is Barack Khan, and the property owner is Ricky Cobb. Property is located at 206 HD Atha and Highway 78. This is in District 3. So what he would like to do is the gentleman that owns this property here, he wants to purchase the one acre to rezone to B2, and that would leave Mr. Cobb with one acre, so he would need it to be R1. And the property, adjoining property owner plans to put a car lot, and he wants to be able to rezone this to B2 and purchase it from Mr. Cobb. And this was recommended for approval with no...
Would you mind hitting a minus a couple clicks so I can see exactly where this is located?
Yes, sir. Let me get that off. So here's HD Atha, Oscar Barton, that's the little store there on the corner.
Right.
Yeah.
The crazy triangle, okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this. Is the applicant here who'd like to come forward and tell us what he would like to do, please?
I'm off of 206 HD 8th Road. And I know what his plan is, and I think...
State your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Ricky Cobb.
Okay.
I'm the owner of 206 HD 8th Road.
Right, okay. Just for the record and for the camera. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. I just want to sell the acre, and he wants to buy it, where he can have a little more to do his little business on. And I told him I'd sell it to him. He's already got a driveway cutting on the other acre and everything.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
All right, is anyone else here in favor of this rezone, like to state, make a statement? Is there anyone here in opposition of this? Wow, this is going to be easy. I will close the public hearing, ask the board to make a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve.
You got a motion to approve?
Aye.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. Thank you, y'all. Finance, is Judge Wynn here? He's probably still tied up in court. Milton, you want to explain what we got going here, please, sir?
Good evening. This is a ARPA AV equipment, fully reimbursable request for courtrooms in the Alcoa Circuit. Courtroom 2, if you remember, already has the same or similar equipment, which...
That's the courtroom we just remodeled with the new...
That's right.
...nicer equipment in it.
Everybody loves it, and they would like to have the same in the courtrooms in Walton as well as in Newton. So this is for the entire circuit, and it would be fully reimbursable.
So this application's for the entire circuit?
Yes, sir.
Newton and Walton? And it'll only be done if it's an ARPA grant?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. Milton, you want to make a couple quick comments? We're just proposing the budget tonight. We'll have a public meeting on what date, Milton?
The 16th of May.
16th of May?
Five o'clock.
To take public comments on our new proposed budget. And Milton's going to kind of give the board a summary.
Okay. This, the budget is posted online right now. If you go to Departments, Finance, you'll see the link. I think it's a lot of information, but it's interactive. You can click on, see at the top, fund summaries, sources, which is revenue. You can click on, see at the top, fund summaries, sources, which is revenue, and then departments is expenses for every department. So, you can see just a lot of information at once. Almost too, too much information.
If you print it out, it's just thick. And I'm on page 189 right now, so.
As the chairman just said, the public hearing is May 16th at 5:00 in this, this room. And then it would be voted on at the next meeting on June the 6th. A couple of comments. The, the budget is revenue-driven and the county is growing so much. We also renegotiated the lost agreement back at the end of last year. The county will get more of the sales tax, a higher percentage. That combined with the growth, revenue, we're showing increase approximately $9 million from, from fiscal year '23, which is a 13% increase. A year ago, it was a 10% increase. We've increased personnel, as you all, well, we've increased some personnel and also given raises to the county employees. A few other things. We're trying to lease vehicles to cut down on costs. We've, will, this coming year, we'll have a ramping up or an increase in the capital projects, the public safety complex. Water Treatment Plan is, is starting to, starting to go as well as the Grove that we're talking about doing. There'll be a lot of activity this coming year. This proposed budget has no increase in the millage and a .5 mil increase in the fire district millage.
Okay. Any questions at this point? We'd be glad to try to answer. The reason for the .5 mil increase in the fire district tax is that tax was set up to pay for the county fire services. And the state was criticizing a little bit that we were taxing municipality residents to pay for county fire service. And we're going to try to get that tax to totally pay for the fire service and quit taking from my general fund, funding the fire service. And it's going to take a total of about .8 mil to do it. And we're going to do this first one at a half mil and then do a couple smaller increments. So, it doesn't give anybody any cause to come and jump down somebody's throat. So, feel free, the budget's online. Start looking at it. And on May the 16th, we'll answer any question any public member has. And we, I'm kind of proud of the fact that we're not raising the standard mil rate again. And for 22,000 homeowners that their values are frozen, there'll be no increase in your county property taxes. And that with 7% inflation is a pretty good trick. So.
There's also a hard copy here.
There's a hard copy kept here at this courthouse. That's what I'm reading through. I can't handle the computer screen that long. But, and any questions, feel free to call and ask and we'll, we'll go over it on May 16th. All right, thank you, Milton. We need to adopt the presentation of the proposed budget. Could I get a motion from someone?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the presentation.
Okay, this is just adopting the presentation.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, you have the administrative consent agenda, which covers our minutes and miscellaneous stuff. There's IGA with the City of Loganville, so they can use West Walton Park, I believe, for the 4th of July. There's a memorandum of understanding with GDOT for roundabout at State Route 81 and Ozora Church Road. That'll be up and coming. Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the administrative consent agenda.
I move that we approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, a resolution. And this is a resolution approving the execution and delivery of an intergovernmental contract with the Walton County Public Facilities Authority to ratify certain actions previously taken by the county to consent to the authority taking certain actions and for other purposes. And councilors, you want to make a comment on this or?
This is basically the resolution to move forward with the bond transaction to borrow the $36 million through the Public Facilities Authority to do the first phase of the Walton Road Park, to do the renovations on the government building and to renovate some of your fire stations. This is basically the step to deprice the bonds. This will come back to you one more time to
For our approval.
Once you have final numbers for the bond sales.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
We got a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain?
Yes, sir.
So, you're against parking Walton Grove?
No, I'm not against the parking Walton Grove. It's the bonding mechanism of borrowing $36 million, just like Mason. Oh, my God. But I'm good. It's not that I'm opposed to a park.
Okay, I just had to ask. All right, it still passes 6 to 1. Okay, human resources, we got a contract renewal, benefits renewal with MSI. Thank you, Jim. And Melissa, will you briefly tell us, this is our health manager for our health insurance, and this is our 2023 benefits package?
Yes, sir. The recommendations by MSI benefits for the 2023 benefits renewal includes renewing with Anthem with a few suggested plan changes. The recommended plan changes are being proposed to help promote the new employee health clinic and no recommended changes in employee payroll deductions are being proposed.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion to renew?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, contracts. Ratification of acquisition of 192.98 acres from Baker Farm Nature Reserve LLC. Sharna, would you pull up the map since you have that and pull up our Hammond Drive Courthouse, please?
Yes, sir.
And Jackson Creek Reserve LLC for $325,000 for the public safety complex. And transaction with Atlantic Coast Conservancy, Inc. to remove the conservation easement from 80.251 acres for $1,600,000. Should get the map. All right. Now, zoom in on the courthouse just a little bit more.
Okay.
There you go. That's it. This is the track that surrounds our Hammond Drive Courthouse. And there's an additional 15 acres right beside it, follows the creek to the Baker driveway. This, we just got released and this is approving this. No more restrictions. It's out of the National Conservancy easements. We can, we all, not only have the jail site, we have four other building sites now. And it does away with that strip behind the courthouse, which kept us from 12 acres that we own on the other side of the creek. So, this finally undoes what the conflict that put it in the conservancy did several years ago. And where the graded spot is and back around toward the driveway on the backside is where the public safety part will be. The $1,600,000 was approved when we approved the jail budget. The $325,000 was new money to get the manager out of the way. And Sharna, if you'll slide it down to the left, we, and that gives us control of the rest of the open land. You see the wooded track on the right. It gives us control of all the rest of the Baker property. So, should the county in the future need additional property, the county's in control and we just go to the conservancy condemn and pay fair market value for farmland. So, that has improved the county's public justice center and future growth for Walton County government. Any questions from the board? This took a year and four months. Shouldn't have, but it did. Entertain a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I've been waiting 10 years to make this motion. I make a motion, we approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous.
Abstention. Abstention.
Oh, okay.
Two.
We have two abstentions. Kirkland Dixon and Lee Bradford. Okay, we have a bid finally to do the walking trail down at Social Circle Community Center. Hank, you want to tell us about that and who got the low bid?
Yes, sir. Hammond Grading Company submitted the low bid of $64,170. We've been holding off on this until the weather turns, got paving season. They're supposed to mobilize on the 15th. I asked the board to approve and accept the low bid.
Any questions from the board? How many bids did you get?
Two.
Two.
The delta was about $110,000.
Oh, okay. Entertain a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, but I'm not against the walking trail. I, I know the Hammond's. So, I'm going to abstain. So, anyway. All right. John, you got the manager's report?
I've got a couple of projects I want to make sure you're aware of and, and provide a few updates. One project is that we've been notified by Williams Pipeline. That's the owner. They own and operate Natural Gas Transmission. They're reaching out. They've got a project that also impacts Walton County. Their larger project is called the Alabama-Gorgia Connector Project. They're going to be doing some land acquisition and different things like that. But the only work here in Walton County will be the replacement in increasing the horsepower of an existing electric motor-driven compressor. So, if you see their advertisements, they're required by regulators to advertise this project, but it will not involve land acquisition or any expansion. It's just replacing equipment. But they have to go through the same process to make people aware of that due to regulation. But it really won't be any noticeable impact to Walton County. Please put May 16th on your calendar. We've got a busy schedule that day. We're going to start off in the afternoon, I believe, at 4:30 with a Public Facilities Authority meeting. That's going to be followed by a special-called county commission meeting. At that special-called county commission meeting at 5:00, we're going to have the budget hearing that Milton covered. We're also going to review the annual impact fee report from planning before the transmittal to the regional commission, and that's one of our certified local government requirements. And then we're going to follow up. There's a, I think, a pretty lengthy board of adjustment meeting right after that. So, we're going to have these staggered throughout the evening starting at 4:30 on the 16th.
That'll be the final bond approval, too.
And the final bond approval, yes. So, we've got all that going on there. In reviewing and working on the impact fee report, it brought to our attention one of the things that the commission had delayed in the past, but I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and update our impact fee analysis. We've got increasing cost and we have the opportunity to potentially revisit those fees and revisit the distributions to help with the budget and the impacts that we're realizing from the growth. And those impact fees are authorized by the state, have to be approved by the county commission, but they only impact new construction and not existing residents. So, it's set to offset some of those fees there. Also, we have another trails grant that we have in the works. This one is a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant that we're working on for trails down at Hardley River Creek Reservoir. We've identified that and just three days ago, a new grant opportunity that we're going to be able to use that same information on will, through the Georgia DNR recreational trails grant project. So, we're going to try to piggyback some of these things. This will add additional trails around the area that was mulched down by the fire station. We're going to put it in a couple of different phases. Phase 1 will be down near the boat ramp. There'll be an additional fishing pier proposed as part of that. And then the second phase will be across the street. So, we'll be able to have quite a bit of an extensive trail system with a figure eight in that area. It'll be in and around the area of the new water treatment facility. So, we'll have access to that as well as from the fire station and from the existing parking lot at the boat ramp as well. We've got quite a bit of projects going on, but just wanted to also update you on the paving. Part of what the 2023 Elmeg and Sploß resurfacing projects. Bethel Church Road has been completed. Jackson Creek Road is being completed. Part of Jackson Creek Road in conjunction with the City of Good Hope under the Service Delivery Agreement. Next prepped is Thompson Drive and Sandy Creek Road for upcoming paving. And we'll then go down through the project list from there, but those are the ones that we're currently working on. The new employee health clinic is going well. Planning has already moved into Annex 1 and that's going well, especially with the upgraded parking lot in between the two. We'll be scheduling a ribbon cutting for that and it won't be long after that. We'll be scheduling the ribbon cutting for the employee health clinic as well. And Fire Station Number 7 is going quite well out at Good Hope, as well as the new convenience center directly in that same general area. Finally, I just wanted to thank all the employees because I could go on and on about all the great things that are getting done and they all deserve all the credit. But I want to give special thanks to HR for all their hard work on the employee benefits. We've done pay raises and different things like that. But I think another huge impact on employee morale are good benefits. We have those good benefits. It helps greatly with our recruitment and we owe a lot of that hard work to HR for keeping and maintaining and managing that benefit package for us. And finally, I just want to thank finance. We've had our budget hearings and I think that the commissioners that were at those budget meetings on the budget committee would agree. We had a lot of needs and a lot of wants. We were able to pare that down. We were able to balance out quickly. And I would dare say that this was one of the easiest budget seasons that I've experienced in over 20-something years. So, I just wanted to thank the finance department for all they're doing because with, with finance, and that includes Ms. Rhonda and her role in purchasing, that's kind of the heart of the operation. We can provide public safety. We can provide all this, but if we don't have the equipment, we don't have the people and we don't have the people getting paid, it just comes, it comes off the rails. But, so they're the heart of the operation, keeping things moving. And this budget preparation season was a, was a delight to be a part of. So, I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, John. Well, got your attention. And I've been getting a good bit of feedback revolving Well, got your attention, and I've been getting a good bit of feedback revolving around our new road widths in our subdivision from developers and planners. And I'd like to look into, because the wider road down the road to county, the upkeep on them's going to be more. And when you got a 20-foot road servicing an area and requiring the developers put a 24-foot road in, I kind of think doesn't make sense. If we have wider roads servicing the area, then maybe. But would you please look into that and report back to the board because of, I don't want to, you know, unduly put hardships on the county or what we've been doing prior. But please look at that and report back to the board. All right, we're down to public comment, and we have one that signed up for public comment, Ms. Lynn Jensen. There you go. Please come around, and if someone will help them with the mic, so...
I didn't understand, so the mark will have to be adjusted.
That's what I'm asking for them to do.
And I would like to thank you for your service. As you can see, I have served also.
We could pull it around down front, and then you could roll in. He doesn't have to look directly at us.
Yeah, he does.
Please, because I'm hard of hearing. I want to hear every word he has to say.
There we go, I think. Thank you. My name is Lynn Jensen, and I'd like to thank you for your service, and I have served also. I pray that God blesses me. Throw her out. Blesses me and my tongue and you and your hearts. Let me give you a little background on who I am. In July, if I make it that far, I will start my 84th year. However, just a little less than a year ago, the doctor said you have stage four prostate cancer, which is pretty much... Today also, on a second property that we owned out in Arizona, I took a $100,000 hit I apologize, I can't read my own writing. I am here today because every 28 days I get a $30,000, $39,000 shot, two of them. And every month I get a prescription with tablets in it. Has four little tablets like that. That's $500. However, it's working. I dearly love my wife, so to protect and can, and protect her safety and quality of life, we have just removed about $30,000 worth of trees that might fall on the house. And I have set up eight, and now I have another Arlo cameras and a doorbell camera. Today I'm here because my concern for the house and the neighborhood is the next problem. I mean, I've tried to anticipate things, but as they come up, what's going to happen? I'm here because of the neighborhood. Currently, we have three issues. anytime change, and I listen to y'all sit there, and I'm sure you're well intentioned, but you don't have any of the human side to any of those decisions. What's happening to the people? And I think you swore to help the people, not help the developer, not help the county, but the people. I was taught in pharmacy school back in 1960s that the reason we have laws is to help people, protect people. None of the other things, just protect people. So the three issues we currently have in the neighborhood are a gentleman down the end of the road who has been chasing not to do what he's doing, but he does it anyway. He's running a garage door business out of his home. Now, I don't understand why you all aren't on his case to charge him business license or something else, but apparently you are not. There is a home on the road that has a number of work trucks in it. I'm trying to die with a sense of humor, but the only, the only thing that would take that many work trucks and force would be seven doors from Snow White. It's just... I claim personal privilege, and I ain't going to be here for the next seven meetings. So if I could have each of those three minutes, that would be helpful. Thank you. There's a metal building seemingly set up, and it doesn't look like anything. I mean, it looks like a big tin box, and that's supposedly a house. Now, when they go in to ask for something, y'all say, what are you going to do? And I guess, I'm going to do this, this, and this. I don't believe there's any follow-up on what the heck you're doing, because that's... The county employees do not work for me. They work for you. You work for me. And you volunteered for that work. You asked for it. You probably fought for it. Spend a lot of time getting it. Your responding employees are nice and pleasant. Thank you, Sharna. But a lot of things just seem to slide, and we do it for seemingly good reasons. One I heard most recently is this guy's just trying to make a living. And forgive me, and I can go into profanity versus vulgarity, but hell, every crook's just trying to make a living. There ain't anybody out there. The division was on River Mist Drive, and my wife and her first husband moved out there 27 years ago. It's a really nice place. We're safe from a lot of things. I have three different camera systems outside. It's a blessing that it's a dead end, a dead end road because there's not a lot of people wandering in through there. However, some of these things are going to change yet because they come in with a lot of particular traffic, and I am not afraid of the UPS or the Amazon people. I know them well, heaven knows. She says I need to sum it up, send her out of here. Government is a zero-sum business. You cannot give somebody an advantage without taking advantage away from somebody else. If I kind of let that slide, somebody else is going to pay for that. So let's pretend that I and my wife are your parents. You love dearly. Help me make and preserve the safety and life of quali, the safety and life quality. I can't do anything when I'm dead. I have done and doing everything I can. But there's this creeping thing that's going in there, and it's all well-intentioned. Oh, what difference does it make? It makes a hell of a lot of difference. It might be life and death difference. Quit patting me, dear. We did just sell a house out in Arizona tonight. She can follow through on her threat to kill me, which is pretty much daily. I would like to think, think that y'all will take a look at some of these things and try and be more diligent in enforcing some of these things. Everybody's got a sad story, but if somebody else gets screwed on it, that's too bad. That's the world. Take a look at the world out there. Take a look at the places that I've lived, Lake Denver and Seattle. I can't go back there. I wouldn't dare, particularly since I can't run now. Thank you for all your blessings and all the things that you do and things you do to protect and save our lives. I just want your people to take a second look at some of these things. And it's terrible that somebody has to do something that's inconvenient. I heard things here, but, well, I'd have to go buy a piece of land. Okay, you're in business. That's called business. Called cost of doing business.
All right, Mr. Jensen.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to ride out there personally and look myself. I appreciate you coming and speaking, and I hope you appreciate us extending a whole lot of time for you to get your point across.
Do it again.
No, that's okay. We still have, we still have a little more business to take care of tonight, but thank you very much, sir. All right. Are there any announcements that need to be made? If not, we do need to have an executive session, real estate, and probably will not have an announcement when we come out of that. But welcome to stay. Who knows? We might have an announcement to say, but I don't think so yet. So let's retire to executive session.
I move we adjourn to executive session.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? They cut your mics off. They cut your mics off in case someone's standing there.
They cut your mics off in case someone's standing there.